Like to call this meeting the Sholo City Council to order. Show that all council members are present for the acceptance of Councilman Adams asked to be excused tonight. Tonight, I've asked Councilman Clark to lead us in invocation followed by the Vice Mayor. Ladies and the Pledge, if you'd like to stand and join us, please.
Our Father in Heaven, we're thankful for this opportunity we have to gather as the Sholo City Council. Grateful for the conditions in which we meet, for the wonderful buildings that we have and for land and the beautiful surroundings that we have in our mountain community. We are thankful for the citizens of Sholo and for the trust they've placed on us as their council. We pray that thou please guide and direct us in our decision making tonight, that our thoughts will be about the best interest of the community and that we will be guided and directed by thee. We pray that thou please watch over and continue to protect our military and our law enforcement, our first responders. We ask that thou will bless this with the moisture that our lands need as we are always in need of moisture and we're always worried about fire season that's ever on the horizon. We are grateful for all that thou has given to us and we say this in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate that. Alrighty, next item on the agenda is called a public. Any citizen desire to speak on a matter that within the jurisdiction of the city, council may do so at this time. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person, shall be addressed to the city council as a whole and not to any individual member. Issues raised shall be limited to those with the jurisdiction of the city council pursuant to Arizona Open Meeting Law, the city council cannot discuss or act on any items presented at this time. At the conclusion of the call to public, individual city councils members may respond to criticism made by those who have spoken, ask staff to review a matter, or ask staff to put it on the future agenda. And I believe we only have one person tonight and we're gonna go with Big Al. You're first. And I can't wait until you come up front here and pronounce your name for us. Name an address for the record, but I can't wait to hear how you pronounce your name.
Oh, man. Mr. Mayor.
Use your name and your address first.
Oh.
Name's fine, we got your address right here.
My name is Alatina Nautote Tofete.
See? I was gonna almost nail that.
In English. In English, Big Al.
Thank you.
My wife and I, we moved up here about almost ten, a little over ten years now. We used to live in Vernon, but now we reside in, they call it the outskirts of Sholo, up in Burner Ranch Road. I stand before you today, I'm not bringing anything to put on the calendar, but I just wanted to put something in your heart. I left California in nineteen, in 2009. After studying the, all the reservation in the state of Arizona. My wife is Native American, we have eight kids. And every time I visit, the word poverty mindset keep coming in my heart. I had a good living, I had it all. My neighbor was MC Hammer. That's how I would thrive. I'm from the island of American Samoa. And after seeing what's going on in reservation, I said to my wife, why do I feel like I'm more proud to be an American? I wasn't even born here. And that really hit me in a way that I wanted to do something for this country, even if I wasn't born here, but at least for my kids. I quit my job and I went a full-time missionary in the state of Arizona. I'm not representing any church or anything, I'm just by myself, living of whatever God is gonna be putting in my heart. I moved my family up here in Sholo because I thought it was the closest part to all the twenty-two reservation state of Arizona. And then two years, I've realized it, even this precious mountain need help. And that's where I stand before you. With all these cultural issues, racial issues, profiling, being wrong to our men in blues, I just felt like as a person of culture, maybe I can bring a little bit of light in our mountain. But just simply sivering in the way that my motto is very simple, find a need and feel it, find a hurt and heal it, asking nothing in return. Because that's how I feel like America was founded on those values. Values of not asking for anything in return, but simply serve to help your neighbors, your country, your city. What I wanna present to our city, there's lack of community events, family friendly events. My family and I, we serve in almost all the senior homes up here, same thing, really, we don't charge. We go in there because I tell people, some of those elderly there, that's the last of their road. Why not help, put a smile on their face, a laugh? Maybe that's something that they could remember when they pass on. So we do a lot of free luau performances up here, we do community, free food, luau cooking, because I know nobody, most people up here probably never been in the island, so why not bring the islands to them, to this mountain? And that's kinda like why I'm standing before you. Maybe something like, we served for five years, my family and I served for the Sholo Day events, every April we perform luau, asking nothing in return. John Maxwell says unity is vital. In essentials, unity, in non-essentials, liberty, in all things, love. I think all the problems that we're seeing in our society, not just the White Mountain, but it's just a lack of that, lack of leadership. Too many of us are opinionated and wanted to get, to say what we wanted to say, but not knowing that maybe sometime what I said is not good for everyone, maybe only good for few people. But why not show love in our community? Because I feel that what you have to face in our city is basically our fault. Families are not coming out, parents are not doing their jobs, but we always like to blame somebody else. But we don't like to stand in front of the mirror and says, what do I need to do to help better my city and my community? And I stand before you, I would like to do something for our city, asking nothing in return. I don't know how to do it, but I wanna do a lot of these event, maybe a live concert, free food for all the families, just come bring out a chair at the Sholo Day Park, I mean the Sholo Park, and enjoy the music that you don't have to pay for. Or maybe a luau, bring a luau festival up here. I have about fifteen vendors that I've been bugging their ears the last three years. If I can convince the city to do something like that, would you come up? And they all agreed, they said, you make it happen and we will be there. Or maybe a night in the park of watching a movie as a family that is friendly to where it's safe environment, our city are there, our men in blues are there, and just to make sure that the family are, you know, are entertaining at the same time to go home and says, I really like this city. There's too many of us nowadays, this COVID and all this stuff, I'm not here to argue with that. I just feel like everybody, every family, they're bombarded. I do a lot of free counseling up here where from marriage to youth issues to families issue. Because I kinda tell people, I might not have a degree, but I have, you know, raising eight kids, I think I should know something about being a father. And being from the island, I think a candidate stole this from us, but I think the quote came from our island, it takes a village to raise a child. Nowadays, I see around even at Walmart or a gas station, when an elder tried to tell a young kid, hey, be quiet, young man, they will scream out and cuss them out, you ain't my mama. We all know, I'm forty-seven, if I say something like that in front of anybody, probably have a bloody nose, and nobody will get mad or criticized. Why? Because it's takes, it's gonna take a city to raise a child or to bring peace and unity in our community. I'm here to stand before you, what can I do, sir? To bring that love and peace? And enough of this garbage about racial profiling and all these political stuff. I tell people all the time, if you're gonna talk to me about politics, make sure you read all the stuff about this country. You know your history before you come to me. Because if you don't know and I don't know, then both of us shouldn't be arguing about politics. So I stand before you, I'm here to serve. I see a lot of craziness going on there, and there's a lot of Native American reservation close to Sholo to the White Mountain. Use me, let me be your foot to go out there and to serve the community, to bring whatever it takes, to bring love and peace and harmony to this beautiful mountain. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Big Al, appreciate that. I just so happen to know the right person we can turn this, your information over to, so I'm sure he'll be getting in touch with you. We always need events, always family events, I mean, we do a lot of events, but we do need different events too, and that sounds pretty exciting, so.
Yeah.
We'll get this over to our, I don't even know what justice, but we'll get it turned over to him for sure.
I got it noted.
Got it noted already? Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Much for your time, much.
Appreciate that. Allowing me to speak. Alrighty, next item on the agenda under special events is a presentation by the Sheriff's Office, Sheriff Klaus and Chief Deputy Swanee and your support team sitting over there. Probably gonna say a little or nothing.
Good evening, thank you Mayor Leach and Vice Baron, members of the council. Appreciate the opportunity to always come to your council meetings. This will be our third year that we've come to give a brief report on kind of our interactions that the Sheriff's Office is working in conjunction with the city of Sholo and specifically with the Sholo Police Department. We appreciate just taking a few minutes to talk about that because we know that in the White Mountain, just like Big Al was talking about, there is a lot of collaboration, especially in government, and that's healthy and it's working well in public safety. First, I wanna commend your chief, Chief Brad Provost. I know he doesn't need an introduction amongst you all, he's been with the department back when I think it was volunteer, part-time. He's a great man that has done a lot of great team building and teamwork, working with the Navajo County Sheriff's Office in just the last year and prior to that in his many positions that he's held within the police department. But tonight, we're just gonna give a brief update on our MCAT, which is, last time I was here, we talked about the history and I'm not gonna re-go over that again. But since then, the Sheriff's Office has worked with the city of Sholo on several different projects in conjunction, like how MCAT is built. And what I mean is, we're in talks now with the SRT team, our Special Response Team, making that more multi-agency, where Sholo's not carrying the burden of that, but sharing that in county, helping carry more of that load. The homicide task force, which has been around for several years, but there's some great legislation that's being run right now at the Arizona Legislature, where we're gonna be bringing more funding so we can extend our training, we can get more equipment, and we can broaden our services there. Brad, our Chief Provost, has actually been a big part of this. We're in the works, we're not ready for a report on it now, but a traffic enforcement detail. He's helped with this lobby, the Arizona Governor's Office of Highway Safety, and bringing that program. Again, it'll be a multi-agency task force, much like MCAT is. And lastly, we're working on a communications project through our ARPA funding, through the county and the city, that's over three million dollars, and this is gonna help, we've heard the conversations of communications between all our agencies. This is a huge project and Brad was a big part of that, kinda helped, he'd been working on something like this for years and we were able to put something together pretty quickly at the last and get that to the Navajo County Board of Supervisors, and that was approved a couple of weeks ago. And that's gonna be a big change and a big step forward in our dispatching and communications and our information sharing and officer safety too, so that's huge. But tonight, we just came to, and so I expect next year, when we come to do another brief report, you'll be hearing more about these other entities where we're working as a task force between multi-agencies. But tonight, we wanted to talk about MCAT. As a board, we've talked a couple of years ago that we would come each year and we'd give a presentation to the city councils, because Sholo invests many of your budget of public safety is to fund this task force. And you guys have always dedicated an officer, at times a sergeant, and we want to report back on that return of your investment into that team. And I've been really proud of the work that we had, a reorganization a couple of years ago, where our focus has been more what we like to call community-based, working with our detectives in each of our agencies, our chiefs of police, and targeting the problems that they see fit, or that they are seeing and that they need addressed. And we'll talk about a couple of those. To introduce the team here, we'll call them a team tonight, right? We got Chief Swanee, he's gonna come and give the presentation, and we got Wiley Williams. Lieutenant Williams is the commander over this team, and he's actually the day-to-day. Although he's, he may try to pretend like he's playing more than he's working, but Wiley's actually available twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, and he has been responding night and day to many of our problems throughout the county, and we couldn't be more proud of the work him and his team have been doing. And the officer that you guys have always dedicated to this team, I think Bruce, yeah, Bruce is in the back. And then we have Bruce Tucker here, he's our deputy chief over all patrol operations, and appreciate them coming and helping out with this tonight. So with that, I'll turn it over to Brian for a presentation on MCAT.
Thank you, Sheriff, Mayor, council, staff, thanks for allowing us to come. Tonight, I was preparing for some wisecracks from your mayor, so I came prepared, I'd like to present him with something if I could.
Oh, great.
Coloring book?
Up your speed, buddy.
He's got some sort of a wisecrack about my haircut or my weight or something.
And you know I'm gonna win, right?
Most likely, but I'm on record.
I have the mic.
On record with the crayons, so. But no, seriously, thank you guys very much for this opportunity to come and talk to you about some of the activities with Sheriff's Office and the thing that I have a lot of pride in is our major crimes apprehension team. I get to have the luxury of, or the pleasure, I guess I should say, of kinda overseeing Wiley. That can be a challenge at times, but like the sheriff said, the work that is being done day and night throughout the year is absolutely phenomenal. But just wanna quickly go over a little presentation here, I'm assuming, just roll this, oh, there we go. So the multi-agency task force of MCAT truly is that. As I've listed out here, our partnering, our active partnering agencies that kinda make this thing work, from HIDA, which is the high-intensity drug trafficking area, to Homeland Security Investigations, US Marshal's Office, Sholo Police Department, Winslow Police Department, we just have an incredible group of partners that we work with each and every day to help provide public safety and target criminal activity here in our county, and that also spreads outside of our county. Just some quick annual statistics, the drug seizures, I won't read them all off to you there, but those are some pretty impressive numbers. Eight hundred and twenty-three pounds of methamphetamine has been seized by MCAT operations right here in Navajo County. Some of them was destined for the county, some were passing through, going to other communities throughout the nation. Heroin, one point three pounds, that's actually dropped slightly from years past, because the next couple bullet points down, the fentanyl pills. We've all, I'm sure everybody here has heard of fentanyl, there are big, big, big push on getting information out about fentanyl. It is as common today to have fentanyl in somebody's pocket as it was five years ago to have a little small baggie of weed. It is, it's everywhere. Last year, we seized fifty-three thousand fentanyl pills in twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, two hundred and nine thousand fentanyl pills. And I've got a couple of quick summary stories at the back, where on the backside of this presentation, where these fentanyl pills are being seized right here in Sholo, or are coming here to be sold from Sholo, and these guys are working, are working that, those targets or those people possessing it and working it backwards, targeting the supply chain in the Phoenix area. And we don't have the reach to get across the border, but it's all coming from across the border, these fentanyl pills are coming across the border, period. But anyway, in our physical arrests, a hundred and thirty-seven, assisted other agencies, four hundred and thirty-four different times throughout the year. You break that down by fifty-two weeks a year, that's a lot of assists that the team is available, again, twenty-four seven for anybody that calls and asks for their help. They served a total of eighty-one search warrants, and the eighty-one search warrants, that may not seem like a lot, but to develop the probable cause, to write the affidavit, to serve that warrant, each one of those warrants, you could have anywhere from four to eight hours invested just in getting to that point of service of that warrant. So lots of computer time doing these investigations. Some drug seizure comparisons, methamphetamine, the dark green is the, it was last year in comparison to twenty-twenty, significant increases all the way across the board with the exceptions of cocaine. There is actually, there is, it didn't show up on the slide there, but there is a slight sliver of cocaine, we're not seeing the cocaine coming through like we have in the past. Everything is pushing towards fentanyl and methamphetamine. Those seem to be the poly-drug combination that we're seeing throughout. And these statistics here, and these numbers and the comparisons are very consistent all the way across the board throughout the state. The fentanyl and methamphetamine are just shooting through the roof. MCAT arrests in twenty-twenty, ninety-six, up to a hundred and forty-three, those numbers are not matching. What did I do here? A hundred and thirty-seven, ah, we fudged them a little bit, we added a couple, just kidding. But that's a thirty-three percent increase in twenty-twenty-one than twenty-twenty. And these guys, you know, I told them I need another thirty-three percent increase for twenty-twenty-two, and pretty soon they're gonna run me off, but incredible work that they're doing. And those are arrests that have been made by MCAT detectives, those are investigations leading to them being arrested and incarcerated. I would say probably a hundred and forty of those were all felony cases, very few misdemeanors are even looked at by this team. They might have picked up a misdemeanor warrant somewhere along the line, but those are all as a result of a felony investigation, criminal investigation. Kind of a breakdown by city on agency assists, the two big ones here are Sholo and Winslow. And the, actually, I'm sorry, Sholo, NCSO Patrol, and then Winslow. And the two city agencies inside Navajo County that have participating members on the team, active detectives, is Sholo and Winslow. So like the sheriff mentioned earlier, the investment that your city has made by giving us a detective to put on the team, we make a focus at working here in Sholo. And same thing in Winslow, and the team travels all over the place. In fact, the detective from Winslow was actually in Pine Top today, addressing a pretty significant public threat over in Sholo, or in Pine Top Lakeside, that was satisfied about four o'clock this afternoon. Just a quick summary here, I gave four just small examples of, or short examples of some of the work. The MCAT team assisted the police department with an ag assault drug investigation that resulted in about forty-one grams of methamphetamine and one gram of heroin was seized along with evidence that supported the original investigation, which was an aggravated assault. That was a, so basically, Sholo PD started an investigation and then some drug information came up on it, they reached out to MCAT, MCAT then furthered that into the drugs, but then also found additional evidence to support the original call for service. The detectives were working, on the second bullet point here, the detectives were working a, kind of a long-term drug sales operation, where they'd been monitoring and surveilling vehicles that were coming from the valley, bringing drugs here. They set up a surveillance operation at the Maverick and ultimately made a traffic stop. Information received at that traffic stop led to a search warrant being served here at the Quality Inn in Sholo that resulted in thirty thousand fentanyl pills being seized. Those fentanyl pills were coming here, those were coming to our town, and it makes me sick to my stomach. Another hundred and five grams of heroin and numerous other items of drug sales. That was a humongous hit right there, that was a great case. Another long-term drug investigation led to a warrant being served at the Timberstone Apartments. The investigation linked drug sales from Sholo, Pine Top, and Snowflake. They, after they hit the house or hit this apartment, they realized that this apartment had been fortified, steel around the doors, steel bars across the door, keep cops out. And this is how serious these guys were in there. The MCAT team was able to breach that door, enter that house or enter that apartment, active fentanyl use being done at the time. The sergeant immediately recognized this as a hazardous area, but before he could get his detectives out, they started to suffer the effects of fentanyl, just with the ambient air in the room. Lieutenant Williams and the team, give me chills talking about that, had to deploy an R-CAN on our guys. They were ultimately treated and released from Summit, but that was scary, it was a scary deal. Now, they also, detectives are followed up on information from just a patrol officer here in Sholo, says, hey, I've got some information, because the cops are out there getting information all the time. And one of the officers says, hey, I got this information on this, on some drug, on some drug sales, which then followed up to a search warrant being served at the pines that resulted in another eight hundred and eighty fentanyl pills that were being distributed out of the pines. So that's just four stories that came from Sholo. As I was sorting through these things, I've got pages of these stories, and those are ones that I thought, you know, kinda hit the nail on the head to give you an idea of what these guys are doing. They don't work Monday through Thursday, they work Saturday through Sunday, twenty-four hours a day. They, like the sheriff said, they're always available. City of Sholo has, as the sheriff said as well, the city of Sholo has always provided support to this team. Officer Chris Low was a member of the team for approximately four years, four years, did a phenomenal job, it was his turn to rotate back into patrol, most likely is gonna, you know, take on other roles within the police department. You guys just recently assigned Officer Noronho to the team. I don't think Officer Noronho was there two days and he was already writing his first search warrant. The kid hit the ground running, and he represents your city very, very well. And that's really all I have at this time. I do need to clarify, when Chief Provost started in law enforcement, his actually first duty weapon was a sword, for those of you that didn't know. Any questions that you guys may have?
You talked about a thirty-three percent increase in arrests, how does that correlate with the elevation or the percentage that the drugs are coming into the community? Are we trying, are we almost keeping up?
Oh, we're making a dent, but I, there's a lot more getting passed, there certainly is. You know what, with a rule of thumb or kind of a number is, all the drugs that get seized, you know, coming across the border or being interdicted across our state interstate system, we're only catching anywhere from one to ten percent, it's arguable in there, because we'll never know how much is actually getting through. But I do believe that, and I'm going out on a limb here, I do believe that the team is doing a phenomenal job identifying our different dealers here in our town and they're targeting them. And I'm not afraid to say that, they're targeting these criminals that are bringing this poison into our city, into our county, and they'll identify them and they just start working them until they can get their hands on them, get them in custody, and then they start working backwards towards whoever's supplying those. So it's funny, they just had a recent case where the, an investigation was taking place that was that was, that led to Phoenix. And these hillbillies, they wanted to go down and work at 11th, 1100 West Roosevelt. I'm like, no, no, no. Not sending, not sending a bunch of you hillbillies down there to work in the Garfield District of South Phoenix. So they connected with, they connected with the Phoenix PD's Drug Enforcement Bureau, and they showed up with the target name, and Phoenix PD wasn't even aware of these individuals. So they've since served warrants there and seized lots and lots of fentanyl and methamphetamine. Some of that was going to be coming our way. So I don't know an exact correlation, but I do think it's, it is kind of running hand in hand, but I do believe they have a pretty good handle on who's who. And as soon as you smash one, another one pops up. So it's a constant, it's a constant.
Well, we really appreciate the work that all of you are doing, and we ask that you, we ask and pray that you stay safe, and we're grateful for you and our community.
Thank you.
I just want to know where the real hero is. Zoltan? Isn't that who you're, Zoltan? You know, I read about him all the time.
It's his birthday this week.
Right, right.
You know, next time, I think he needs to come see us.
All right, we need to have Danny bring.
You know, no, but I really mirror what the vice mayor said. You guys do a great job. I see it all the time. You know, you guys are putting it out there and letting the community know what's out there, and I think that's just so important.
Yeah. Diddle, thank you guys very much. Wiley, thank you for working so dang hard out there. I kind of think I see you playing more than working, but if you're working, I must be asleep.
We have him first.
Play. When you're having work, you like work, play.
All right, any other comments?
Just thanks for the work on the fentanyl.
Yeah, thank you guys very much. Stay safe, appreciate it. Did you have another comment?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, 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 I was just saying, thank you guys. Appreciate that.
Appreciate you guys coming here.
This space on the agenda.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Congratulations on the good work.
Okay, next item on the agenda is consent calendar. We'll have a consideration of resolution number R202203, authorized submitting applications to the Arizona Department of Transportation. Consideration of acceptance of grants from Engle Bank Studios. Consideration of acceptance of grants from Cornerstones of Science. Consideration of resolution number R2022-04, rescinding resolution number R2020-26 and adopting revised Title V or VI. Consideration of the minutes of the council meeting. Retreat October 18th and the regular meeting on February 1st, 2022. Does anyone want anything pulled off that? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar as read.
I'm out.
I got a motion and a second. All those in favor? All those opposed, same sign, motion passed. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is new business. Consideration of award of construction contract for sunken manhole repair project, city of Cholo, project number S2722. Mr. Emmensaw.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The city currently requires that new wastewater manholes are backfilled with a type-two slurry backfill, similar to low-strength concrete. Slurry material is poured into the excavated area around the manhole, later dries and provides a strong base for a future asphalt replacement. Now, the requirement removes the difficult task of compacting backfill material next to the curved surface of the manhole. Manholes installed prior to 2008 may have been installed without slurry backfill and likely with aggregate base impacted along the side of the manhole. If the aggregate base material was not compacted correctly, the roadway begins to settle around the outside of the manhole. The steel cover and manhole ring sticks out of the settled hole, creating an unsafe condition for the traveling public and snowplows. Scope of this project is to excavate eight feet deep around the settled manhole, replace with slurry backfill, reset the steel ring and cover, install a concrete collar, and replace any asphalt removed. 18 manholes have been identified for this project at various locations throughout the city. Project was designed by city engineering staff with a construction estimate of $148,000. The project was bid in accordance with statutory requirements following results. Apache Underground Excavating bid of $151,200. Our Bloom Underground Incorporated at $195,31.98. And Standard Construction Company Incorporated at $269,820.0. Staff recommends awarding the construction contract for the sunken manhole repair project, city of Cholo, project S2722, to Apache Underground Excavating in that amount not to exceed the The bid tag relation for the work is attached, and I'm available.
Any questions or comments or motions?
I should say here, I move to award the construction contract with sunken manhole repair project, city of Cholo, project number S2722 to Apache Underground and Excavating in the amount of not to exceed $151,200.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passed. Thank you, sir. Sorry to take up so much of your time tonight. Okay, next item on the agenda, summary of current events. Council members?
I would like to say, if citizens out there want to find a great place to volunteer, I know that the senior center, Meals on Wheels, is looking for drivers, and it would be really great if you could spare 90, I think it's 90 minutes of your time, maybe once a week, or just fill in when possible, they would love to hear from you. So if you can stop by that senior center, if you're interested in doing, you know, that type of volunteer work, they would really appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilman also.
Yes, just to let everybody know, tonight, right now, at the Cholo High School, the girls varsity basketball team is playing their first round of state playoffs. Tomorrow night is the boys' first round. So if you'd like to get involved in what's going on in the community and see different things going with the kids, those are a couple of good things to go look at. Also, boys' baseball and girls' softball and track is getting ready to start, but I just have to hand it out to all six basketball teams. Last Friday, we played against Blue Ridge and we won all six games. Congratulations, Cholo.
That's always good to hear. Anybody need seconds? City manager?
Just a little update on the girls' basketball team. They won 49 to 31. And they play Saturday, or Friday night in Thatcher, against Thatcher. Recreation is accepting applications and registrations for spring one-pitch softball through March 1st. And more information on those programs, 532-4130. And just a couple notes on public works projects. We have a contractor continuing working on the sewer project on McNeil from 4th to 8th and in the Days Inn property. The water line for First Drive in McNeil is completed and they're finishing up the main tie-overs this week. And the concrete work at city campus parking lot has been completed. They're waiting to do the pavement work on that project when the weather permits, and then it'll be a lot nicer to use that facility. It is temporarily open right now for some of the youth basketball leagues. Again, we thank our citizens. We have quite a few projects going around town and just trying to improve the city. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. Appreciate that. Next item on the agenda, scheduling of meetings. I guess one of them, just remind everybody about the, I'll go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say same thing. Remind the council, next Tuesday, the 22nd, at 3 o'clock, you have interviews scheduled with the three EAS applicants for that, for the accentuate service. One of them has specifically asked that they have their airplane that they, an airplane that they're going to use for the service out at the airport, and we're going to invite the other two to have their planes available for council to look at. So we're scheduling that at 2 o'clock. If the council's able to make that, you'll be able to look at the different types of aircraft they plan to use. And then we'll, because we already have the interview scheduled starting at 3 o'clock here at the council chambers. So we'll put notice out to the council on Friday and let you know about both the interviews and the 2 o'clock meeting.
Anything else? Seeing no other business before this council, I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you, guys.